Geez, everybody's so quiet. I'll call to order our meeting for the Citrus Heights City Council for September 24, 2025. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft.
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I will ask Vice Mayor Lopez Taft to lead us in the pledge.
All right, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could you please read our video statement?
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, September 29th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Approval of agenda.
Move approval?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
And I have asked Councilmember Schaefer to do this proclamation as he's our only male. I thought it was appropriate.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men, of course it's in men, and is estimated that one in eight will develop this disease in their lifetime, and this year approximately 313,780 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States, and roughly 35,770 will die this year from the disease, which is one in every 15 minutes. And African-American men are the highest risk for prostate cancer at a rate of one in six men, an incidence almost 70% higher in black men than in white men. Wow. And it is estimated that 29,600 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and 4,140 men, California men, will die from the disease this year. And early stages of prostate cancer usually don't have symptoms, so education regarding early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and protecting our families. And the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, and the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider to make an informed decision about testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore be resolved, the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and joins communities across the nation to increase awareness about the importance of their early detection and treatment of the disease. So we have here Mr. Carl Washington from the Greater Sacramento Prostate Cancer Support Group here tonight to accept a proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
Just a few. Thank you. Thank you very much for the proclamation. The goal is to, it's a very touchy subject for men, and the goal is to get men to start talking to their doctors. If we get more men talking to their doctors, then more doctors will talk to more men. There will be more screening, early detection, and that 57,000 statistic will start to go down. So many men find out about their disease much, much too late when they really don't have to. So I think the City of Citrus Heights again for the proclamation.
And I'd like for a moment to reflect on the fact that I certainly have had prostate issue. I had a TARP in 2017. That's a, it's called a transurethral prostate resection. Essentially, it removes most of your prostate. So I have a very low PSA now. It's about .4 usually, but I still get tested, and it's nothing to be ashamed of. And if you're a guy that gets up and has to go to the bathroom eight times a night, you probably should be talking to your healthcare provider.
So I'm glad you said that, Councilmember Schaefer, because I'm very impressed. Many, many men do not know their numbers. It's my view that men should know their numbers like they know their social security number.
Absolutely.
Is there any comments or questions? I have a question, and this has just come from a female, okay? Are all prostate cancers metastasize, or do they just stay local?
No, very, actually, it's not a real high percentage that metastasize. Usually, if it's caught early, it is caught contained in the prostate bed, and it's very, very treatable, so.
So early detection is the big key.
Yeah. I mean, with prostate cancer, it's a really, really big key because.
It's like breast cancer, and you know, early detection, you can, high rate of survival.
Exactly. Yes, yes, yes. Survival rate is very, very high with early detection, and the treatments are starting to grow at an exponential rate. There's all kinds of treatments now that are able to treat early-stage prostate cancer. So testing, early treatment.
So tell us about your group, your prostate support group. Are you local? Are you Sacramento?
Yes, Sacramento Valley Prostate Cancer Support Group. We're local to the Sacramento Valley. We meet at Mercy San Juan. We meet at, it is, we usually meet at Mercy San Juan every third Thursday of the month. So.
And you have a website people can look up?
Yes, 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 yes. They just search for Sacramento Valley Prostate Cancer Support Group. They'll get the site, they will get information on when we meet, they'll get a contact, and everyone's welcome, both male and female are very welcome to the meetings.
I don't know, maybe, but my doctor told me that 80% of men, by the time they reach 80, will contract prostate cancer.
Yes.
Really?
So, yeah, so prostate cancer is a disease of age, so 80% of men will contract prostate cancer, but less than 10% of those will die of prostate cancer. So it's a very, very slow-growing disease. The problem is we're not talking to our doctors enough, we're not getting tested, and we're not catching those instances that actually grow and start to cause more problems. So, yes, it's very common, so it's a, like I said, it's a disease of age. As men get older, they become more prone to prostate issues, and, but it's not necessarily something that is, something that's going to affect them adversely because it is such a slow-growing disease. That's why it's important to get tested, find out, you know, what stage your disease is in, if you have it, and take appropriate action, so.
I want to thank you very much for coming and for requesting our proclamation because it's an awareness thing.
It is.
So once again, you're Sacramento Valley Prostate Cancer Awareness Support Group.
Yes, yes.
Can we come down and take a picture?
Absolutely.
Next item.
Next item, please.
Our next item is presentation number five, Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Recognizing Firefighter Appreciation Month and California Firefighters Memorial Day.
And I've asked Councilmember Middleton to do this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. In the audience, we have representatives from the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District here tonight to accept the proclamation in honor of the Firefighter Appreciation Month and California Firefighters Memorial Day. I would like to invite them up to the podium. Battalion Chief Michael Sloan, crew from Station 21, Captain Kurt Kotseoshi, engineer Nicholas Dupre, and firefighter Logan Funkner. Had to go back to my one year of Japanese to get that correct. So here is the proclamation as it stands. Whereas firefighters play a vital role in the city by protecting the health and well-being of our community members, preventing and preparing for emergencies, and educating the public about fire safety. And California firefighters respond to nearly 3 million incidents each year, providing not only fire protection, but also emergency medical care, disaster response, technical rescues, and other essential public services. And on October 4th, 2025, hundreds of firefighters and their families, along with their fellow Californians, will join to honor the brave firefighters who have lost their lives in the line of duty during the 2025 Annual California Firefighters Memorial Day in Sacramento. And the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District assures the well-being of Citrus Heights residents, businesses through the tireless work of its staff and crew among its four local firehouses, Station 21, Station 23, Station 27, and Station 28. And Metro Fire dedicates countless hours of service to the Citrus Heights community through critical emergency response, risk reduction programs, community education, and public engagement events. We're almost there, guys. And the city partners with Metro Fire to execute everyday safeguards and go above and beyond to carry out exceptional operations. Now, therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Firefighter Appreciation Month and October 4th, 2025, as a day to commemorate California Firefighters Memorial Day, and urge all citizens to recognize that firefighters make fundamental and irreplaceable contributions to our state with their willingness to make sacrifices to serve the public and ensure our communities are stronger and safer. And I'll just make a quick comment. As you guys know, I love firefighters. My youngest brother is a firefighter out in Gardinerville, and you guys do amazing work, and I always tell the story about how my son during COVID set the toilet paper hoard on fire in the bathroom, and you guys came and gave him a stern talking to. I appreciate that community education.
Thanks.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. My name is Mike Sloan, I'm Battalion Chief for Metro Fire. I work at Battalion 13, which covers a lot of this district. Today, we have Rescue 21 crews here to receive the proclamation. We appreciate the opportunity to come in here and receive this proclamation. The badge we wear signifies much more than fire suppression. It symbolizes the commitment we have to our community to serve and treat our public with the dignity and respect they deserve and be there for their most vulnerable points in time. This proclamation also calls us to remind us of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. We have the firefighter memorial that's not too far from here, in which on October 4th, 2025, we're going to go, and there's going to be 30 names put on that memorial for this year, two of which are from our fire department, Randy Gross and Anthony Benalisa. We'll continue to honor them with the dignity and respect they deserve by continuing to do our job and serve the public, and we thank you for the opportunity to come in and receive this proclamation.
Any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for everything that you do. My youngest brother is also a volunteer firefighter in Syracuse, and I know, like our police, you guys often are meeting people on one of their worst days of their lives, and I just appreciate tremendously the strength that you guys have to be able to do that. So I hope you're taking care of yourselves on every other day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
We already told the toilet paper story, we're good.
Let's go give them their proclamation. Okay, good job, everyone. Great job.
Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the City Council during the meeting. We ask that you please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And I have three speaker sheets for this portion of the agenda. So the first person is Gigi, Miss Citrus Heights Arts.
Hello, hello. So, hi, Mayor, councilmembers. Today was a good day. Today, we did a mural, and I know you think that the fire, that the fire, the police can't paint. The police can paint, okay? So we did a mural, and you can see some of the pictures up here from the mural that we did. We did a paint-by-number mural, and the police showed up. I didn't expect so many officers to show up. They came and they showed out. They were happy, they were engaging, the community was like, wow, look at the police. I got called about the police painting. It was very, very awesome. So you can see these pictures, and I want you to get to the, when you get to the end, to see the finished product. So there it is. There it is. And I just want to say Sergeant Schaefer, she was a trooper. She showed up too, and she showed out. She stayed to the bitter end.
That's nice.
And that was what we had. Now, back to the rest of the murals. We have more, and we do have Metro in the house, and they will be doing one in Citrus Heights. So thank you all, and good night.
Wow, that looks nice. Is there room on the other side of the wall to this one, the 90-degree wall? Is there room to another one? On the one that faces community?
I'll go check it out.
We'll see.
Make that happen.
I think there's room, I can't remember.
All right, our next speaker is Tim, is it Reber, Reiber?
Thank you, Tim Reiber, representing Green Waste Recovery. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and community members. Green Waste Recovery is a 40-year-old Northern California-based company focused on sustainable practices with our network of processing facilities focusing on single-stream recycling, organics processing, and construction and demolition recovery. Our services include servicing nearly 20 communities in Northern California for collection of waste, recycling, and organics, and hundreds of customers for, commercial contractors for commercial construction and demolition recovery. Green Waste would be a willing participant in an RFP for the collection of the essential services of waste recycling organics to the community of Citrus Heights and their residents should the City Council let an RFP out in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Kathy Morris.
Mayor, council?
I was going to kick out a howl, I just see a little head over the.
Well, if you had a step stool, I could.
Thank you. I am Kathy Morris, I'm currently the president of REACH. I'm here on the community information process. You probably know that September 28th is Good Neighbor Day. It was actually created in 1978 by President Carter, and it has evolved over a period of time into Good Neighbor Week. So now what we have is Good Neighbor Week, which is September 27th through October 4th. What is Good Neighbor Week? What is the whole purpose of it? The intention is that each of us can recognize and be aware of who our neighbors are, who our good neighbors are, and that we would be a good neighbor as well. What is a good neighbor? Well, it's a matter of being conscientious, being considerate, being communicating, you know, the idea of just saying hi, how are you? Being friendly to your neighbors. Well, like, for example, for me, I happen to be a wimp, okay? So it's a lot of times I can't get the nozzle changed on my hose. Maybe I can get it off, but I can't get the new one on without leaking, so I go get a neighbor to help me put it together. That's pretty simple, okay? But it's also a thing that a good neighbor does. And the other thing a good neighbor does is say thank you. Quite often, we forget to do that. So it's kind of the time, this week, September 27th to October 5th, for us to raise our consciousness of what we have as neighbors, who we are as neighbors, that we can be a good neighbor, and that we can appreciate a good neighbor. Maybe if we do it properly, we can turn Good Neighbor Week into Good Neighbor Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, that's it for speakers?
Correct, that is all of the speaker sheets that I have.
Okay, next item.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
I'll start with Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, let's see. September 12th, I attended the Citrus Heights Police Department Honors. It was great to see so many of our officers recognized. I was just surprised with the numbers, the stats that were put out, and just how hardworking they are every single day of the week. It's amazing. Let's see, on September 13th, I went over to the Battle of the Bands at Rush Park, and it was a lot of fun. Got some good barbecue, they ran out of Chardonnay, I'm not going to complain, because it was for a good cause, supporting our veterans.
I heard they had it hidden.
September 18th, I attended a perceptions of homelessness event at Sacramento State to just get a better idea of what's going on in our community and within the region, and how they're tracking those numbers, and what resources are available. September 19th, the Public Safety and Community Appreciation Luncheon, the district attorney, our district attorney, Ten Ho, gave a very powerful presentation, and it was just great once again to see all of our law enforcement partners out together, and the really nice thing was the color guard, because it was multiple jurisdictions, I could not find my Citrus Heights guy in there, but I know, I know he was in there somewhere.
I thought I saw his patch, but the chief said not.
Aw, man.
I thought I saw the patch.
And September 20th was the Habitat for Humanity Gala, which was a lot of fun with my colleagues. The ladies came out, we looked amazing, we looked stunning, and also, we got to have our city recognized for the great work we were doing in our community on Sienna Drive. I can, I think our table was pretty loud when that announcement was made.
We cheered ourselves on.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And?
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I won't repeat those events that I also attended with Councilmember Middleton, but I do want to say I attended the reopening of our Citrus Heights leadership, and I'm part of that next class, and that first meeting was on the 11th. On the 16th, we had our CHAESN meeting, which I attended, and the Citrus Heights Water District is now starting up their Budget Roadshow, so coming to a neighborhood association meeting near you. On the 18th, I attended, I am on the SAC Library Board's Budget Committee, and we reviewed the budget, which will be presented to the board in our upcoming meeting tomorrow. So if you're interested in, in the budget information, as I am, always interested in being a fiscally prudent, and so we reviewed the budget there. And finally, the thing you didn't talk about, on the 19th, was Citrus Nights. What a fun community event. So I really enjoyed that event, wonderful music, nice to have food trucks out there. Again, another great time for our community to gather somewhere local and have a family, family-friendly fun. That's it for me.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, let's see, where do I start? I, on, on the, so I went to the Battle of the Bands on the 13th, great, had a great time. Then on the 14th, at 5:15 a.m. Sunday morning, I flew off to Boston for the American Public Transportation Association, their annual event, where we talk about all different kinds of things with regard to public transit, and I sit on the RT Board, I was there to represent RT. Very interesting event there. I was a little disappointed in that I was really looking for more data-driven, how, you know, how our bus routes really kind of drawn up, and it's kind of more sort of old-school, shoot-from-the-hip kind of thing, but we see demographics change around, you know, around things, around events. And so I'm interested in seeing what AI can do for us there in making transit more efficient. And so, so that took me, that was back in Boston, I was there until the 17th. Then we had another, my wife and I had a dear friend, did a surprise party for, for his girlfriend, it was an engagement party, and then we got there and he said, we're getting married in an hour. Like, that's, wow, that's pretty, wow.
Short engagement.
Pretty impressive, but it was a great event, got to see, I've been to Cincinnati many times, but it's a lovely city, I really like it there, but, but yeah, it was a, it was a great, but the problem is you had Boston early in the week and Cincinnati in the end of the week, so it was a pretty busy time. And then, so this week, I have, let's see, there was a, there was a gathering, oh, I did volunteer to be on the nomination committee for the leadership on SAACOG, but that's really, that wraps it up for me.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 11th, I attended a short briefing from the Cable Commission, since I'm the alternate to that board, and then later in the day, on the 11th, I had the STA meeting there at the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. We received a presentation by SAC Moves Coalition, and that was pretty interesting to see the response from the representatives across the region. It seems like SAC Moves is really pushing toward people using alternate methods of transportation other than cars. So it, it seems to work better for like the downtown Sacramento area, not really our suburban cities, and, and those points were made there. And then on the 17th. And then on the seventeenth, I got to attend with the mayor the Bells Across America at the Citrus Heights Veterans Community Center, and that was pretty cool. We rang bells for two hundred-something seconds.
No, they did three, five minutes, I think. She did, it's supposed to be...
Well, we won't worry about the amount of time.
It's supposed to be longer, but they did it shorter.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if everyone's been, but we rang bells in honor of the Constitution.
And read the preamble.
It was Constitution Week.
And we read the preamble.
Yes.
Recited the preamble.
It was very cool. And then I also joined at the Habitat fortieth Anniversary Gala on the twentieth. And then on the twenty-second, we had some meetings for Arts and Culture, two by two. And then this weekend is the Terra Madre Americas event that I've been mentioning the past several meetings. So if you can get out there, it is Friday through Sunday, and they have a bunch of activities. It's free to attend. They have food for purchase. They have different lectures, and they have live music on Saturday and Sunday with our hometown hero, John Wild, playing at three p.m. on Saturday. So I hope you all can make it out there.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, you know, people think we aren't real busy up here, and that we get paid way too much. So in the last two weeks, I had something every single day except one day in the last two weeks. So I have a question mark on one day because I couldn't read my writing in my calendar. I don't know where I was. But we went to the CHPD Awards, and I want to say that if you, was that televised at all? Was that, because it was real impressive to see the accomplishments of individual officers recognized, and some of them were amazing, and so it was, it was, it was good to be there. Then I did go to the Battle of the Bands. If you thought they ran out of Chardonnay, they also ran out of the red one. So, but then when I ditched and moaned, because I was the sponsor of the wine, all of a sudden, he goes under the table and found, oh, happened to find another bottle. So it's, it's who you know. Anyways, that was a fun event. That was fun. The bands were excellent. On Sunday of the fourteenth, I went to the fundraiser for the Foothills Canines that do the work for police dogs upon their retirement. They pay for veterinary, you know, their post-retirement. We don't pay them pears, and so they get, you know, the handler usually takes care of all their expenses when they retire. So the K-9 Foothills had a fundraiser at the comedy club, and I think I saw one of our officers there, but I was just shocked that it wasn't packed, you know? And so I just, I don't know if they didn't get the word out, but I, I was just, Ted and I were like, it was almost an empty room, except for one little corner and one loudmouth next to me. And then I did Monday with the mayor, the following Monday, and on Tuesday, I went to the mosquito meeting. So this is information I want to share. So mosquitoes were like low all summer, our positive West Niles, because it was a mild summer, but now they're starting to pick up. So our peak used to be in July, and now we notice, and normally, we don't get a lot in September. We've already had ten since the beginning of, up to the meeting on the sixteenth. There were already ten more positive pools. So we want to be sure to keep doing the draining. We get these little tiny drizzles where there's just enough water for, for larvae to develop. And you'll notice that Citrus Heights, and you might have seen it in the Sentinel, that Citrus Heights is getting some ground spraying. It starts at Sunrise Boulevard and goes east, so like with the Woodmore Oaks area, and the Mitchell Village area is getting ground spray. So they go with little backpacks, and they just ground spray. And this is for the invasive mosquitoes, the day biters, that we like to know whenever there's day biters. They found two in my backyard, one in my dog bowl, one in my watering can, and so they are in Citrus Heights, and we want to nip them before they proliferate and carry diseases. Also, yellow jackets are picking up along the American River Bike Trail, so if you use the American River Bike Trail, watch out for them, yellow jackets. As far as West, I was surprised to see that the number of people who have gotten West Nile in the state of California this year, there were nine new human cases this week in six different counties. And so so far this year, there's been forty-three human cases, thirty-eight of them with a neuroinvasive, where it affects your nervous system, and three fatalities. So the median age of, of the victims were sixty-six, and fifty-eight percent of them are males. There's also, if you donate blood, you could be asymptomatic, donate blood, that you're tested for West Nile antibodies, and you can find out if you ever had it before. So anyways, it's still, it's still something you need to take care of now, for this month at least, while the weather's warmed up the last couple of days. So dump those water, anything of the source that the mosquitoes can multiply in. We sure scrubbed our dog bowl. The Bells Across America was commemorating the signing of the Constitution on September seventeen, seventeen eighty-seven. Next year is the two-hundred-and-fifty anniversary of our country, so it'll be cool. And it's Across America, one p.m. our time, at four p.m. Eastern Time, and it's just a reminder of our nation's enduring commitment to liberty and democracy. I went to the same day, I went to the ribbon-cutting, oh, this was cool, the ribbon-cutting for the bargain supermarket on Greenback. What a nice little store it is. I thought it was gonna have, like, real groceries, but he doesn't really have. He's got, like, a good selection of liquor, which we didn't need to do a thing for because it's not saturated. And they have a lot of snacky foods, but he doesn't really have any green, you know, no produce. It's not a real grocery store. So, but you go in there, he's a really nice man. We had popsicles. It was cool, popsicles. I did go to SACOG for, because you were in Boston, so I did your SACOG thing. We went to Wheatland and went to Bishop's Pumpkin Farm. That's where our meeting was, in the big barn. And we didn't take any real action on any items, so you'll be getting what we saw for next month, you'll be voting. And it's basically the federal funding, how it's gonna be divvied up for streets. And then we got a tour of Beal Air Force Base, which was quite, quite interesting, yes. Seven thousand employees there. Amazing. Then on, and then I went to a reception for Wood Rogers that night, not that we do any business with them that I know of, but I get on their mailing list, so I may as well go get a free glass away. And then I did Citrus Nights, and that was, I gotta say, that was a great event, Ash. Doing Citrus Nights, I hope we do it annually, because when, when people were dancing in front of the stage, and the little old man with his cane, and he was, oh, this was just so cool. They were just kids. There was a little tiny kid dancing, and it's just, it shows our community was, was really together, and it was, I'm glad the council members that joined me on stage, that we could welcome our people. I think that was a great event. See how you can have an event without fireworks? It's really, really a great event. And I did go to the Public Safety Lunch with, with our fellow council members. Did go to the Habitat for Humanity Gala, which was overheated. On Sunday, I had the day off. And then on Monday, I did Monday with the mayor. And I went to the SOAR meeting, and at SOAR, it is the Citrus Heights Water. You know, the neighborhood associations is a place you can get information, and so the Water District that's on this side of Citrus Heights, that's serviced by Citrus Heights Water, you get all the information you need about water. And we had Lieutenant Galco, and I want to thank him for coming, but Officer Spencer Greenley, he's our DUI officer, and he did a little demonstration of what you think is a one ounce or two ounces of liquor. And it's amazing how you think it's this much when it's really this much. So it, it was good. Today, I did do the Sewer District meeting, and one of our projects is Harvest Water, and that is where we take our recycled water and connect pipes to farmlands in South Sacramento to save the, the resources of the groundwater in the consumable area. So we have put in, the budget is five-hundred-and-ninety-seven million dollars. It's a big project. We've laid forty-one miles of pipeline so far, and, but what was interesting is they've resurfaced nineteen miles of road, because they've digging up the roads to put in the pipes. And they showed one of the, one of the roads they're doing total reconstruction. And they said it's cheaper to reconstruct a road where they take this machine and they eat up the asphalt and everything, all in place. If, he said that it's cost-effective if they have to do the whole road, because it's not just one strip where the pipe goes, it's like the whole road is shot. And so they showed that machinery in action, and it's like, wow, it was like, we got some roads in Citrus Heights that could use that. And so it was called the Grindr or something. And we have so far fifty-six connections with our, or to-be connections with our, which are farms and ranches, which is about sixty-eight percent of the demand. So, but anyhow, the, if you want to know where they're gonna, I forgot to tell you this. If you want to know where you're gonna get sprayed, because if you have bees, you kind of want, the ground spraying will affect you if you have your bees especially towards the, the street. So you want to sign up for the spray notifications at fightthebite.net. They'll notify your, you particularly, you'll get your notifications, and you don't have to read it in the Sentinel. So anyway, that's my report. I've been busy. Been busy. Next item.
Our, excuse me, our next item is consent calendar. Item number six, the approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Next item is regular calendar, item number seven. The subject is Proposed Amendments to the Citrus Heights Parking Violation Fine Schedule, AB 413 Daylighting. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the Citrus Heights Parking Violation Fine Schedule to include Section 22500 N1A of the California Vehicle Code.
It looks like I'm locked. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Lieutenant William Dunning with the Police Department. Tonight, I'm here to speak about Assembly Bill 413, also known as the California Daylighting Law, its purpose, and how the Police Department tends to implement this new law. Assembly Bill 413 was signed into law in October of 2023 and became effective in January of 2024. It amended Section 22500 of the California Vehicle Code, adding Section 22500 N1A to prohibit the stopping, standing, or parking of any vehicle within twenty feet of a vehicle approached side of any marked or unmarked crosswalk, and within fifteen feet of any crosswalk with a curb extension. During the year of 2024, citations could only be issued if, in the area, the curves are painted or there was signage to indicate no parking. If there was no paint or signage, only warnings were allowed to be issued. But beginning this year, January, on January first, 2025, the law was changed, and citations could be issued regardless if there was painting or signage within the area. So the purpose of AB 413 is to enhance visibility at crosswalks for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers, to ensure that drivers and pedestrians can see each other, with the hopes that this reduces preventable traffic collisions and overall improves traffic safety. Our focus as a Police Department would include within our residential neighborhoods and within our school zones, and as we move forward with the enforcement of this, if approved tonight, we will take the violations that are observed, as well as community complaints, and take that in front of our Traffic Committee meeting for consideration for striping or painting of the curbs in those specific areas. So in front of you, there is a picture example of Assembly Bill 413, where you will see both marked and unmarked crosswalks. The turquoise or green color indicates the setback from the crosswalks for twenty feet, and it'd either be from the limit line, as you see on the top left, or a crosswalk in the center screen. Now, what you will see on the top right of your screen is a purple box, which indicates the fifteen-foot setback for your curb extension or bold out. And as a Police Department, our plan to implement Assembly Bill 413 would be to adopt 22500 N1A of the California Vehicle Code to the Parking Violation Fine Schedule, instead of feeing the amount of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. If adopted by council tonight, our plan is to conduct community engagement to include social media outreach, education at our schools for drop-off and pickup, as well as our community meetings that we attend throughout the month. And with that, we're also going to allow for a thirty-day grace period, where we will issue warnings and utilize education rather than enforcement, to continue that education piece for our community. And at this time, I'll answer any questions that council has, and if there are no questions, staff has the following recommendation for council's approval.
Thank you, Mayor. So what's the sixty-two fifty based on?
Sixty-two fifty is based off its fifty-dollar fine, as well as a twelve-dollar-and-fifty cent state fee. And that, the predominant amount of that twelve-fifty goes towards court fees and really court-based programs as well. So sixty-two fifty aligns with the vast majority of our parking violations that fall within 22500 of the Vehicle Code.
And does fifty dollars goes to the city?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So what are other cities doing?
So other cities in the research, only two cities within our county are enforcing the Daylighting Law. The City of Sacramento has implemented twenty-five-dollar fee, as well as the City of Gold, who implemented a forty-three-dollar fee. And in speaking with the City of Gold, you know, they're going based off parking violations that have not been updated in several years, where we have more of the most up-to-date parking violations within the region.
You had a chart in the staff report that showed all the various parking violations, and they're all sixty-two fifty unless it's some severe. So it's consistent with our other parking fines.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any, I have a question. What's an unmarked crosswalk? How would I know if it's not marked? How would I know it's a crosswalk?
So your unmarked crosswalk, if you look at, like, the top portion there, that's just basically your, your limit line for, like, stopping there. We're actually...
If a person lives on a corner of a, a corner house, he can't park in front of his house?
That's correct, yeah.
Ooh.
I mean, are we gonna make a motion, or are we just gonna...
Any more questions for...
There's like a real awkward staring contest going on. I'm like...
I just, I just, basically, every intersection is a crosswalk, then it's unmarked, right?
That is correct.
If a person could walk across the street, it's a crosswalk?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just allowing visibility to the road that you're approaching to allow you to see pedestrians and cyclists.
And if, if a person gets a ticket, there's a process for them to appeal it?
There is an appeal process, yes.
Any questions? Make motion.
I, I wanted to just make a comment before we, we accept motions. This is, this is something that we've struggled with in my neighborhood. You know, we have someone who owns a box truck who parks it, and, and it's very, very difficult to be able to see approaching traffic in order to make good, good decisions for when to enter traffic, the flow of traffic. So while I am not always a fan of fines and fees of this kind, we really need to be mindful of, can you see if you park your car there? I am a corner house, so, you know, we're very, very mindful to make sure that we're giving our neighbors the opportunity to, first of all, see the stop sign, and to be able to see approaching traffic. We're a three-way stop, but that, that three-way gets violated all the time. And if you can't stop in time, you, you will have a problem. But I'm a little torn, because this, this would affect lots of intersections in residential areas, and I think, I don't know if we can do, if it's possible to do a tiered system, where if it's within the confines of a community, not in a commercial area, that the fee structure would be different. I know that it's very consistent with our fees here, but I'm just concerned that it'll be overly punitive, and I know you have a thirty-day noticing. I think that's a great idea, but I would like to potentially see if it, there is at all a possibility for some differentiation or tier system for the fee structure.
We could take that.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with her, because I think there's so many homes that are on corner lots that park in the front of their own home, and it's not necessarily impeding anyone walking. And so I think we're gonna have to distinguish what Vice Mayor said between the commercial areas, where there are people crossing the streets, and residential areas, where people are just living out their lives with their car in front of their house. with their car in front of their house. So I'm not inclined to go for this right away, so I wonder if we could improve on it. Since other cities haven't even got theirs yet. You know, Folsom hasn't got one yet, Rancho doesn't have one yet, so we could wait.
I do have a couple thoughts on that. I do agree that we shouldn't maybe implement it citywide. However, there are areas, you know, my kids have gone to Mariposa, Kingswood, Sylvan, they're at Mesa, and around those schools and those, where their folks are parking, it is so hard because the kids can't see, the cars are parked there. That, that is where I really think the enforcement should be focused around, especially around those schools, because we have the whole Safe Routes to School program, and that, it's, I'm always terrified when I, when I come around that corner on Sylvan, like, am I gonna hit a kid or a car?
That's fair.
I echo that sentiment as well. It seems like the children are in the neighborhoods more so than the commercial centers. So I wouldn't want to see us make it too easy, you know, to violate this in neighborhoods.
So can we potentially be specific in school zones and commercial zones versus your basic residential area?
What's your comment?
My comment is putting the fine aside, this seems really onerous to me. This seems, so many people would be affected by this, again, parking in front of their homes. It's, I can't support this. I can't.
And I'm wondering if the legislative intent was that. You know, I think it was more like Councilmember Middleton said, around the schools and where marked crosswalks I could see because it's marked. But in residential areas that are unmarked, I think there's a difference between marked and unmarked.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to note, I have received a public comment speaker sheet on this item.
Let's hear the public comment.
Oh, it's not on this item? Okay, I'm sorry, it's not on this item.
Okay. So I think the council direction is to work this little better.
Is that the direction of the council? Because I've heard some different voices up there. But if the council would like us to bring it back and look a little closer at some of these areas, like Safe Routes to Schools, for instance, that do occur in residential zones, and then also some of the commercial considerations, we can bring this back and maybe have a little expanded discussion on those topics.
So just a suggestion, could we limit this to school zones? If you're in a school zone, this-
Or marked, or marked crosswalks.
Trying to keep it from being super ambiguous here.
Sure. There is, I understand the concern for the school zone. There are a lot of congested residential neighborhoods within the community as well. So it could be something we could definitely consider, if that's the choosing of the council, to deviate between the two. But we do have a lot of congested residential neighborhoods within the community where this would affect your cyclists and your pedestrians as well.
And I'll just add too to Lieutenant Dunning's topics there. Like, I mean, I was over at Arcade Creek Park over this last week, and there was a lot of vehicles in that area. So there are some areas around parks, schools, where it's more of a higher pedestrian area that we could certainly look at and talk a little bit more about, maybe some Police Department recommendations, if the council's looking at saying, hey, can you be a little bit more scalpel approach on this thing? I think that we could probably work to do that and have some specific recommendations around some of those high pedestrian areas, and then bring this back. Unless there's a urgency to pass it tonight, if we can just bring it back at a future meeting with some of those considerations in there, does that sound like the general will of the council, or is there other comments that you want to let us know about?
I just want to be clear, like, so school zones, when we're talking about high pedestrian, we're talking about around parks. If there are like, we have like marked bike lanes, you know, where we have this multimodal type of transportation things we're doing, those are really areas we need to be concerned about, and kind of see where, if the Police Department feels like that kind of helps with the areas that they're kind of concerned about.
I would actually like to go the reverse direction and just leave it as it is. And then if anybody has a problem with it being in front of their house, if they have like a quiet corner where nobody's really impacted, then they can appeal maybe for a variance. But I think it's super complicated to go in and say, okay, this should be this amount, and this area should be this amount. I think blanket, 30-day grace period, and then people who aren't really in a dangerous spot, appeal.
Squeaky wheel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Nelson, if you want to make a motion and see if you get a second for this resolution, you may go forward.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make the motion and adopt this resolution, number 2025, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, amending the Citrus Heights parking violation fine schedule to include section 22500 N1A of the California Vehicle Code.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
No.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa?
No. Motion fails, sorry. So we can expect a revision of the motion?
Do we need an alternate motion for that, or should we bring it back? I mean, is there any need to do an alternate motion?
If you, if you really want clarity for staff, we could do an alternate motion and get some direction, or we can listen to what the direction is from the council and know what to go back with.
I think, I think we all gave kind of our concerns, and if you heard them, then you could put together some.
I think we're good unless Lieutenant Dunning, you need anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for your presentation tonight, and we'll bring this back at a future meeting with some of those areas discussed further.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
The next item is item number eight on regular calendar. The subject is Six Month Update 2025 through 2027 Economic Development Work Plan. The recommendation is that the City Council receive and file the six-month progress update on the 25 through 27 Economic Development Work Plan.
Good evening, council. I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. With me is the rest of our department as well. Beside me is Economic Development Management Analyst to Alicia Agiri. And then also with us is Communications Officer Marissa Brown. Together, we're going to be providing a six-month update on the City of Citrus Heights Economic Development Work Plan. So a little bit of history to orient us. In March of 2024, City Council set a strategic objective to prepare and present an Economic Development Work Plan to City Council, as well as establish a suite of incentives to attract sit-down dining and entertainment options. Then, in February 2025, the Economic Development Work Plan was presented and unanimously approved. It includes five economic development-focused categories, business attraction incentive program guidelines, small business support program guidelines, 70 implementation steps to advance economic development in Citrus Heights, along with 18 sets of metrics to objectively measure those results. And perhaps most importantly, to make the execution of this work plan happen, in June 2025, Alicia joined our team, and we've been going really hard at it ever since. So a quick summary of what the work plan includes. It's five categories of work. One, business attraction and development services. Two, business retention and expansion. Three, small business support and innovation. Four, marketing and placemaking. And five, organizational culture. So as I said, once the plan was approved, we set out to implement, and it is a phased approach. We've started to build our programs and foundations in all of these categories, launching core programming. And we'll continue to accelerate this work to strengthen and expand initiatives, to most importantly, realize outcomes. And I'm really happy to report, we've had early wins, and we're excited to share some of those with you here this evening. The staff report included for this item has a more exhaustive list, but what you'll see here is some of our favorites, and especially images and visuals that will create a sense of pride in how economic development is actualizing in Citrus Heights. So first up, the first category of attraction and development services. Right after the adoption of this work plan, we set about, in a really extensive work of streamlining. You heard as part of the work plan presentation, a lot of market research that included interviews with our development community, our business community, and other stakeholders. And we identified some weak points that existed within our own zoning codes, places where we could lower barriers to entry to ensure that we are competitive in business attraction. And those, those updates were unanimously approved in Planning Commission, and then before you as well earlier this year. We also completed an opportunity site inventory, so we know our highest value vacant sites and all of the information that we need to put the right concepts into them. So an inventory of a site is not just about having an understanding of what a building is, who it's owned by. It's the deeper work of understanding the infrastructure, the capacity that the site holds, to make sure that it can fit whatever the business attraction target for that site is. We also established a development liaison role. Alicia is heading that charge. I'm not sure we've actually talked about this with council before, but there is an internal working group that also includes all third-party agencies involved in Citrus Heights' development processes and services. And they meet twice a month to review our project funnel. So everything from planning entitlements, to building permits, to engineering projects and capital improvement projects. These are all the folks that touch these projects, coming around the table to make sure everything is moving well, and there are no barriers, and we are ensuring those outcomes through the development funnel. And that really, at the, at the heart of it, is project coordination. So it's about creating alignment to make sure we're fulfilling our mission of effective business attraction and development services. We also established the programs that were inside of the Economic Development Work Plan, including the Business Attraction Incentive Program itself. As a reminder, the target categories for business recruitment for that program are restaurants, breweries, and entertainment. I also want to highlight that there is language included in the guidelines to ensure flexibility. So there is space saved for, I believe, the, what's the line? The line is "underrepresented or unique goods, services, and experiences." We used the Small Business Design Support Program that was approved as part of the Economic Development Work Plan to help Black Sales Coffee establish and open in the suite at Birdcage Shopping Center on our Sunrise Boulevard corridor. They had a unique concept where they created a self-contained coffee cart, and essentially wanted to operate as a pop-up inside of a space. Cliff's Notes version is, unfortunately, there are a lot of requirements from health and safety codes that don't allow that to happen very easily, which means the project scope changed from a pop-up to a long-term business establishment, and all of the processes that requires. So this business was not ready for that. They didn't know where to go for those next steps. And this program was there to wrap its arms around them and help them expedite their design work that was needed, to submit and ultimately get approval of their plans, which helped them open more quickly and easily. Finally, we have upped our game in business recruiting. I already talked about the business attraction incentive. And we do extensive marketing to target markets to make sure the right businesses and concepts know about that program. We are also, we've forecasted attendance at multiple trade shows in target categories. Alicia and I will be traveling to Southern California next week for the International Council of Shopping Centers Southern California Trade Show, where we have meetings set with a variety of concepts. And there are other trade shows as well on our books that include entertainment target markets and other business attraction target categories. And finally, we've onboarded some really compelling data tools, Placer AI in particular, that helps us build compelling business cases, database compelling business cases, so that we can show effectively that Citrus Heights is the market that a business should be. And this is a quote from Sean McCola, the owner of Black Sales Coffee. He said, "I'm grateful for the design support fund because without it, I would have been significantly delayed in obtaining the proper permitting in order to open my business. It's a great program, and I hope it continues to help my fellow small businesses." So kudos to City Council for approving that program and putting it in our toolbox of resources.
Good evening, Mayor and, nope. Oh, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So Megan just touched on some of the programs that were adopted as a part of the work plan, and I wanted to share with you guys how we recently got to support PSM Monuments through an expansion to a larger site with the Sign Improvement Grant. PSM outgrew their space along Auburn Boulevard, and they chose to relocate to another site, still along Auburn Boulevard. But I'd say it's pretty cool to see a business, one, outgrow their space, but two, select a site still within the city and decide to invest significantly. So we were excited to support them there and looking forward to their relocation to that new site later this fall. One of the specific targets in the work plan was the launch of the Business Safety Hub. So that is now available on our website. It includes information on crime prevention through environmental design, and it focuses on best practices like lighting, landscaping, and property upkeep to discourage crime. Like I mentioned, that information is available on our website, and we get to promote it through our business newsletter, and as well as just kind of funnel people over as questions arise. And not only do we get to point them to that website, but through a really good partnership with PD, we also get to connect them to Lieutenant Dunning and the POP team as those questions arise to address any site-specific questions that property owners or businesses have. Another great safety partnership and multi-department partnership that we had was the CPR, the Commercial Property Reoccupancy Ordinance. We got to work with PD and Community Development to bring a lens of economic development to what otherwise could have been just a regulatory tool. So we got to provide some input on flexibility and exemptions for that ordinance, and you'll hear more about it in a department update. And the next, site visits, really important to the work that we do, getting to connect with business owners one-on-one and getting to understand where they're at operationally through our Love Local campaign and some Auburn Boulevard Phase 2 outreach. We've had the opportunity to connect with 26 businesses, six of which happened just last month in August. So that puts us over halfway through our goal. The work plan calls specifically for 50 annual site visits, so very excited to finish off the year strong. And then moving on to the category of small business support and innovation, another very specific call-out in the work plan is the relaunching of the business toolkit. So all businesses with a physical site in Citrus Heights receive this toolkit, and it comes with a welcome letter from our department, as well as contact information, a citywide department directory, and some SEPTED information, again, highlighting that Business Safety Hub and who they can contact if they need more information on it. And there's also some really cool information from our resource partners and any economic development initiatives that they have, so like SMUDS Seed Program, SAC County Sewers Confluence Program, SBDC contacts, Citrus Heights Chamber contacts, and a really cool Love Local decal that they can put on their storefront. And moving on to technical assistance, again, earlier, Megan mentioned the development services that we have available. Technical assistance is more operational for existing businesses, getting to hear from them where their challenges are. Sometimes that can look like pointing them towards a small business loan, helping with cash flow projections, or connecting them to a marketing workshop. We've had six meetings between June and now, and we look forward to continuing that work and partnering with the Chamber and embarking on leadership Citrus Heights as they continue to do some of that good work there. Lastly, our Love Local campaign. It was an initiative to offer some visibility to the businesses navigating construction along Auburn Boulevard. And also excited to share that later this month, we will be launching the Business of Distinction Award with, yeah, with an inaugural award for recognizing businesses that are- businesses that are doing work around and that align with the core values of Citrus Heights. And with that, I will turn it over to Marissa to share more about our marketing initiatives.
Bless you. Hello, City Council. Marissa Brown, Communications Officer with the city. Thank you to you both. Our marketing efforts around our economic development work plan and all the incredible efforts our team is putting into this, and ultimately, our businesses, we're really excited to share resources with them, but also talk about them to our residents. So our social media is being utilized in all capacities to talk about our really exciting Love Local campaign. I know many of you have seen it on our social channels, and it's been a hit so far. We have gotten great reception from people who are commenting, engaging with the content, and even some of the business owners themselves, who are letting us know that they're having people come in, call, and support their businesses. And this was originally relaunched in support of the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase 2 project. So with the multi-year construction and infrastructure improvements happening along the corridor, we wanted to make sure that our businesses felt supported. So this was essential, and marketing is a huge way to do that. So it's been a great asset to those businesses. Not only are we using the Love Local campaign for Auburn businesses, but we're also promoting all businesses in our city. We've had some really exciting businesses enter into our city or who have won accolades and been rewarded for their establishment here in Citrus Heights, whether by residents or by people visiting. So we've been doing business highlights. The one featured on this image is Black Sales Coffee, a really fun video that people got to see, just to see what the space looked like. Removing that barrier to entry, right? Maybe you're not so sure about if you want to go into the new business, you don't know what it's like, what's on their menu. Let us show you what it's like through our channels. In addition to that is our website. We have a new Love Local website up on our channel, on our website, sorry. And it is going to feature all of the business highlights we've been doing for Auburn Boulevard businesses, as well as any business highlight we do. So an opportunity for people to request a Love Local sticker to put on their window, and an opportunity to connect with the Economic Development and Community Engagement Team as well, if they need anything. So the Economic Development Work Plan is listed on that website, and we're using that as just a resource for people to always go back to if they need us. We're always on the website. We also have our newsletter, so you know about our general newsletter. We also have a business bulletin. So not only are we featuring these businesses and encouraging our residents to visit local businesses in our general newsletter, but we're also, we also have a business bulletin newsletter that was launched last year, and it is talking about all the resources for our businesses that they may need to know. Our most recent one was sent a few weeks ago now and featured how the tax bill might affect you. The Sunrise Mall updates, how to get your business highlighted on our social media account. And the nice thing about this is you don't need to sign up for it. When you sign up for a business license at the City of Citrus Heights, you're automatically on this newsletter distribution list. So we're getting everybody is our hope, and you can opt out, since we have to allow them that option. And ultimately, making sure we get this important information out to everybody, all the businesses in the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Marissa. The fourth category in the Economic Development Work Plan is marketing and placemaking. And frankly, this is some of the most creative work economic developers can do, and it's a lot of Main Street stuff. So one example of how we are revitalizing our hardscapes and commercial real estate through marketing and placemaking is all of the activity at Sylvan Corners. The work plan describes action items to catalyze microgeographies within our city, where we find commercial business champions to walk alongside us, figure out how we can support them, to make this kind of magic happen. The image on the left is the before and after of Sylvan Corners. That was a very important public-private partnership between the property owner, Tom Romeo, the broker of the property, putting some connections together, the city by offering our business grant programs, and Citrus Heights Arts, a nonprofit that programmed the murals on the site as well. So a little teaser of what's coming up in this next leg of Economic Development Work Plan work. We'll be issuing an Auburn Boulevard Business Survey in September. Our intention is to continue our Love Local campaign, both on the corridor and expand it. So the most important thing we can do in stewarding the limited resources we have to make that happen is figure out what would be most helpful to our businesses within that campaign. So it could look the same as the social and comprehensive marketing that we're doing right now. It could look different, maybe perhaps some signage and other creative ways to establish Auburn Boulevard as a distinctive corridor. We also released the Banking RFP that has an Economic Development Tools section, along with community engagement information as well. That is this current city council strategic objective, as well as being listed in the work plan. We'll be launching a business resource hub, similar to our Safety Hub, that provides local, regional, state, and even national resources in a centralized place, easy to look to for our businesses. As I mentioned, we're executing retail recruitment at trade shows. We'll be launching the Quarterly Business Recognition Program and collaborating, actually, I'm going to take a breath here, because this one is really important and really exciting. A lot of, a lot of the work that we've reviewed so far is forward-facing, but a lot of the work that we do to make sure that we're creating fertile ground for businesses to come to the Citrus Heights business community is make sure that our rules and regulations are in line and create as few barriers to entry as possible. We have a great partner in that with Sacramento Metro Fire District. We're working together to simplify and clarify code compliance for infill and redevelopment projects. That was as well a current city council strategic objective, and you'll see more work on that coming up soon. We'll be launching seasonal communications. Fourth quarter is always a really important quarter for retail concepts with holiday shopping and similar. So you'll be seeing a lot of communications and marketing specific to that. And then continued work on the consideration of the reoccupancy ordinance, as well as a department report, coming right up after this. So that concludes the presentation. The staff report, as I mentioned, has an exhaustive list of all of the work that's been executed in the Economic Development Work Plan so far, along with the reference to the work plan itself. And we're really excited to continue progress for Citrus Heights.
Excuse me, comments? I'm looking past you. What did you hear first?
Thank you, Mayor. Just amazing job. Your department certainly has been very busy, and I like the business toolkit in particular. I think that's a really fun feature. It's like receiving a gift basket from your neighbor when you move in.
That was one of Alicia's first projects, and she knocked it out of the park.
Good job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, great job. Thank you so much.
Yeah. As someone who observes, because I'm on the city, the Chamber Board, I really appreciate how you've been working with the business community and the Chamber. You can really tell that there's a lot of integration of efforts, and I really appreciate that, especially the business toolkit. I know Sheri is happy that you're mentioning the Chamber in there. So thank you.
As you know, I'm really excited about the public-private partnerships. Those are critical in building lasting things. We can invest all the money we want to into something, but unless we have those strong partnerships, I don't see it actually growing and continuing to maintain itself. So great job on that.
And I want to thank you. When you put together your plan, we're all impressed with your business plan, because we knew that you were very special doing that. But I do have a question, and it's kind of, not a criticism, but a question. So the only time I heard you mention recruiting businesses was at trade shows. Do you, do you have a program where you actually decide, you know, this would be a good place for a store? And then go find one and say, hey, you know, we got a great space. That 99-cent vacant, 99-cent, do we go and recruit somebody to fill that space? Do we, or do we wait till someone knocks on our door and says, what do you have?
Yeah, it's a great question, Mayor. Business recruitment has so many different facets, and the classical retail recruitment that happens at trade shows is one category of many. I would say even more valuable than trade show activity, although I want to underscore definitely valuable as a foundation. One of the most valuable things we can do is build a really strong referral system of development and business partners. So even more than we could do ourselves with outreach, which we do, we, we find even more outcome potential in maintaining consistent connection with property owners, property managers, the broker community, who are the ones who have market intelligence more than we ever could as a local municipality. So a lot of our work, especially, and the reason why we spend so much time streamlining development services, so much of our work is to walk alongside that ecosystem and make sure there are no barriers to entry for them getting a business in. They know as much, if not more, about market activity and good fits for good sites, and it's our job to be a trusted advisor and a fellow stakeholder in helping them make that happen.
Because years ago, because, you know, I'm an old girl, but years ago, we had like a catalog, it was an online catalog of all the vacancies in our city that was put together by the city. And it said, somebody square feet, location, and then the contact number of the broker or whoever. And it was just a, just a catalog of vacancies, including everything at Birdcage and Sunrise Marketplace, Sunrise Market. So I just kind of think that we, I hate to see all these vacancies. So this grocery store that used to be Smart &amp; Final, so I sent to the grocery guy when we, oh, and I think the ribbon cuttings, when we, council members attend ribbon cuttings, they are tickled pink that the council was there for their opening of their businesses. And so, and so everyone I've gone to, I was always glad I went. And so I think that's something we, we continue to do more of than we used to. And so I really think we should do as many ribbon cuttings as possible. We can't go to every one of them, but usually somebody can go to them. But so I said to this grocery guy, hey, why don't you open a grocery store over there where Smart &amp; Final was and Auburn Boulevard, because they kind of desert over there for grocery stores. He said, they want $12,000 a month rent. So do we ever go to these businesses and say, hey, you know, you'd probably fill this space if you had, you know, negotiate with somebody coming in better terms? You know, maybe they work the terms better.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, in addition to the development services work I just talked about, there's also really substantive deal-making work that happens to be able to eventually get a business into a site. So what you're talking about is a lot of the restrictions that we bump up against. I want to, I want to assure you that we have an opportunity site inventory, so exactly what you're talking about, making sure we're tracking the highest potential vacancies, what is best matched to go in there, that we have relationships with property owners, brokers, property managers, and the like.
And I ask this for the benefit of the public, who sees vacancies is our fault, you know? And so they know that we do well when we can.
Sure.
So that's why I've asked.
It's a great question, and I, I certainly see those comments on social media and receive them in conversation as well. It's a common misconception that a local municipality has control over vacancies. It ultimately is up to a property owner to fill their site, and they have their own ideas on what to fill it with and for how much, right? So it's up to us to be able to influence those conversations, to help them along, to inch it down the field as much as possible, so that hopefully we can all realize a touchdown together.
Perfect ending sentence. Thank you. Any other comments on, any further comments? Information item? Is there a next, move on to the next slide?
Receive the report, Amy? Is there a public comment on this? You said before you had a public comment on something. It had to be on this, right?
No, it was, they, it was for earlier on the general non-agenda items, public comment, so, which we had already passed that.
Okay. So is that it for?
Yeah, this was just a receive and file, the presentation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is this a frequency of every six months, then? Is the timing on reviewing the Economic Development Work Plan progress? That's, I think, what you said at the outset. So this is a review and comment, review and file type item, but a very thorough update. Appreciate all the team's efforts on this.
Absolutely.
Well, I suspect Auburn Boulevard is just going to get better and better as it, as that construction goes away, too.
Our next item is department reports, number nine. The subject is Commercial Vacancy Flash Vote Results by the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department and the Community Development Department.
Mayor Kupinski, Costa, you gave us the perfect transition in talking about commercial vacancies. So for one more item, I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director, along with my colleague.
Casey Kempinara, Community Development Director.
And our goal tonight, our immediate goal, is to review the results of a flash vote survey that was issued last week to ensure synthesis of data and show you everything that might be hiding in the numbers. And that also requires some background in the work that's being done around the current city council strategic objective to explore a potential commercial reoccupancy ordinance. So we're going to go ahead and dig in. As I mentioned, council set a strategic objective to allow for cost recovery and mitigate risk from vacant buildings, present a vacant building ordinance for the city council's review and consideration. Now, we want to frame the discussion here. One of the most frequently asked questions we get as we are doing research in vacancy ordinances is, why can't code enforcement just work in this space? And the answer is, code enforcement is responsive to commercial building issues. However, there is not a tool in the toolbox to promote preventative maintenance. So a building must get to a point to attract code enforcement attention and education. A goal with a vacancy ordinance is to implement preventative maintenance standards, so we don't have to get to that point. And that's very important, because on the ground, it prevents safety concerns, things like blight, vandalism, fire risk. It keeps properties leasable and market-ready. I think we can all, you know, when we think about the commercial buildings that we know in Citrus Heights, we all have our own case study that we've watched over time of a building that has been vacant for, for a while and deteriorates. And what a potential vacancy ordinance would do is maintain that property with standards to keep properties leasable and market-ready. That means early action is less costly than major repairs later, which is also important to the commercial and property owner market, and it builds on the city's recent successes in reducing visible blight.
So last month, we presented a first draft of a vacancy ordinance to help achieve that strategic objective, and we looked at, this is becoming a tool that more and more cities are using throughout the state. There's been some local press on it, too, here locally. Other cities are considering similar. So, but we wanted to take what we learned from the research we did and make sure we tailor-fit it to our specific needs and our specific business community. And so we developed a draft ordinance to help us make sure it was right fit for us. So this, I'm just going to do a high-level overview of what that first draft ordinance looked like and, and kind of walk through what that process was. So the first thing is identifying and notifying property owners of vacant spaces that, hey, you need to, we have this ordinance in place, you need to register it and, you know, comply with this new ordinance. The second part would be a registration process, and a lot of that is us making sure that they, we have the appropriate party. If there's an emergency or a major problem, we get someone out there in 24 hours instead of tracking people down. It also ensures that we have all the information related to their security plan, how their alarm systems are set up, and their fire sprinklers, make sure that's all operational. And then along with that was, is a fee to implement the program, ensure that we are covering our costs to implement this program, as well as, next slide, please. And one of the tenets of this ordinance is to, as Megan described, maintaining it before it becomes a problem. So the ordinance includes maintenance provisions to ensure minimum maintenance standards, security standards, to make sure that they're not getting worse. We want to keep them ready to be leased up as our economic development team finds tenants to put in these places. We don't want them to have to gut the place before they can get someone in there. So keeping them safe and secure and well-maintained is the key to do that. Also making it more marketable. If it looks good, it's easier to market. And lastly, establishing and helping partnership, a lot of the programs that Megan's team talked about earlier today, making sure that we have the right party and communicate, and we can commute the tools that we have available. Talk about, hey, here's a facade grant opportunity that you may have, this may help you get your building ready to lease, and things along those lines, making sure we understand what their plans are for the future, so we can better align and match them with the tenants that Megan and Alicia are working to bring into the city. So we wrote that all into ordinance in the first draft, and we shared that with the SMP Board in July, and then we held a community workshop here in the city.
And Casey, I have to, I have to do some due diligence, especially for Councilmember Schaefer. I see an acronym that is not fully spelled out for benefit of viewers. SMP stands for the Sunrise Marketplace, which is the Property Business Improvement District on Sunrise Boulevard.
Thanks. And then we had the community workshop here at the large conference room across the hall, and had a good turn. across the hall, and had a, a good turnout there of property owners and business owners interested in learning more about the ordinance. And they all provided various feedback. And next slide, please. And we, these are kind of key themes that we heard. There was a desire to increase exemptions for good actors. So, if you have a shopping center and you're mostly leased up, you should maybe have a little bit easier pass than a, a building that's completely vacant. Also, they asked for a more reasonable timeframe. Initially, we had said, if your building goes vacant, you need 30 days. There was a request to register. There was a request for having more time, because that 30 days goes really fast. And then, tiered enforcement, you know, looking at opportunities, again, for good actors, bad actors, to make sure that we're treating them based on their performance and so forth. So, that, those were kind of the main requests. So, we're continuing to sharpen our pencils and make modifications to the draft ordinance in addressing these concerns, and continue to solicit feedback. And flash vote was our most recent feedback. I'll let, I'll turn it back over to Megan.
Thanks, Casey. So, what you heard from Director Kempinare was feedback from our commercial business community. Staff identified an additional priority as we're scoping out this program to ensure our resident community voices are being represented as well, which is why we issued a flash vote. And I am going to pull that up and review it live. For those unfamiliar, flash vote is a survey tool that the city utilizes to gather statistically valid community sentiment data on a variety of topics. Previous topics have included economic development, commu, general community priorities, city communications, and more. This survey was issued on commercial vacancies. So, a total of 422 residents responded. That ensures a plus or minus 5% margin of error in this data, which certifies it as statistically Question one, in Citrus Heights, there are some commercial properties, such as vacant storefronts or shopping centers, that have been empty for a long time. Which best describes your experience with these vacant commercial buildings in Citrus Heights? The options range from haven't really noticed them, to have noticed them, but they don't really bother me, have noticed them and think they are a public problem, and not sure. Overwhelmingly, 68% of the Citrus Heights community have noticed long-term commercial property vacancies and think they are a public problem. Interesting for our data analytics geeks out there like myself, flash vote offers an amenity where you can set it up by, to use certain questions as filters for remaining questions. So, I won't show that here this evening, because we could go real deep on it. But if you're interested, we can view all of the remaining questions by the sentiment about how a resident feels about this problem. So, we can see the level of percentage answers of folks who think it's a public problem versus doesn't really bother me. Question two, what potential aspects of long-term commercial vacancies concern you the most, if any? The variable answers, selections to these questions were polled from the parameters of the ordinance draft, all of the components that staff scoped for the draft and did initial outreach on. When we're looking at these types of questions, a really easy way to determine what priorities are is look for anything over 50%. That's when the needle tips into community majority sentiment. So, you can see from the answers that 72% of the Citrus Heights community thinks that commercial vacancies detract from the overall image or livability of Citrus Heights. In second, at 68%, there is concern that commercial vacancies attract homeless encampments. And then, not quite at 50%, coming in at a close 48%, concern that vandalism isn't clean or repaired. Now, moving on to resident sentiment around what they think a solution could be, some components, these variable answers were also scoped around the ordinance draft to determine potential community priorities. The question is, which of the following, if any, do you think would be the most appropriate ways to address potential concerns? At 85%, ensure vacant properties meet basic exterior upkeep concerns, excuse me, standards, things like no graffiti, broken windows, and maintained landscaping. Coming in at 61%, ensure vacant properties meet minimum security standards, things like secured entrances, working alarm systems, and sprinklers. You can hear between both of those categories that, that is really what, those issues are what creates commercial vacancy decline in the first place. In the previous agenda item, when we're thinking about a property that once was relevant and usable, and we've all watched declined over time, those are the components that create that decline. Finally, coming in at 50%, a, a thought around requiring owner registration if a commercial property is not being maintained. Again, things like graffiti, broken windows, et cetera. So, perhaps maybe the most important question after we've identified variables of a potential solution is around potential support of a solution. So, question four, the city of Citrus Heights is considering a policy that would require owners of long-term vacant commercial properties to register with the city, follow maintenance standards such as signage, security, and appearance, and pay fees to cover the cost of program administration and enforcement. Would you support or oppose this type of policy? And available answers ranged from strongly opposed, somewhat opposed, neutral, somewhat support, to strongly support. And when we look at a statistical survey question set up like this, it actually shows a stronger level of support than we see at first glance. So, if I were reading this flash vote, as someone unfamiliar with a flash vote, I would think that that question shows 55% of the Citrus Heights community supports a potential ordinance, when really we need to calculate both somewhat support and strongly support. And that means that 79% of the Citrus Heights resident community would support a potential ordinance. Finally, a best practice of any flash vote that we issue is a last question offering for any other comments or suggestions about commercial property vacancies in Citrus Heights. And I, I won't go through these one by one. I would encourage council and community to look at them at your convenience. It's always great to see what our residents are thinking. I do want to underscore that this question is qualitative data. So, even if you see a high-frequency comment within the answers to this question, that does not necessarily mean it's a high-quantitative data point. For instance, one of the most frequent comments that I saw, as I reviewed the comments, is a strong support of an ordinance, but perhaps non-support of potential registration. We don't know how or why folks think that way, but there are some simple answers that these comments, now that we have this intelligence, will help us wrap into outreach. So, if someone were to ask me that question, the most simple answer I could say is, we need a quick and direct way to get ahold of these property owners. There are a, a variety of contact databases available to us, but they're not always accurate, and they're not always at the level where we need to connect on the ground to fix property issues. So, that brings us to the end of the flash vote. Any questions on the data, other takeaways?
Vice Mayor?
All right. My question is, is a simple one. So, we did a resident flash vote, but we, we have very soft data from what we've been presented here on the, the owner's side. So, can you do something that would be quantitative data on the property owner's side, just so we can get a comparison? Because it would be grossly unfair for people who don't own commercial properties to comment on commercial properties and fines and fees when, when they don't truly understand what that means. From a commercial owner's point of view, I think it would be very fair to have a very similar flash vote concentrating on our business community.
That's a great thought. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
So, and that certainly the challenge is, the people that would be most affected by this are not responsive. So, that's the, that's certainly the challenge, where people that, that are involved, whose properties aren't typically, may not be as affected. If you have a, a property owner who is, lives, or is out of state or out of country even, that's not a responsive person. That's, so, I, I would certainly consider, I, I support what Councilmember Taft is suggesting, that, hey, we need to reach out to the property owners, but we also have to bear in mind that if these property owners aren't responsive because, and they're the, the violators here, it doesn't bring a ton of value to talk to the people who are responsive.
I would consider that a response.
Yeah, same. I think that would actually be valuable to see who doesn't respond.
So, I think maybe now would be a good time to go into what outreach has been done so far. There have been multiple rounds of direct outreach by the city to commercial property owners within city limits, along with our Business Bulletin e-news, which is all of the email addresses from our business licenses. So, that's over 3,000, including all 1,500 occupied or unoccupied brick-and-mortar businesses. And then, past that, follow-up communications to the stakeholders who have requested more direct information from staffs, specifically from the first business community workshop. So, that gives you an idea of outreach in general. I also want to, if I can get permission to get into some making of the sausage really quick. Flash vote is a tool that the city has been using since 2022, and it's taken us that long to build up the listserv, those 821 individual resident email addresses to send to that gets us the statistically valid data. Right now, there's not a tool that exists that could capture statistically valid sentiment data from our business community. That would be a more standard survey, right? Think, think a Google survey or similar. And we, the city has issued a variety of those over time. In my tenure alone, I can, I can think of at least six or seven rounds of various types of business surveys, and the response rates are dismal. I wish, I wish we had more, because that's exactly the market intelligence that we need to be able to inform these and other kinds of initiatives. But the, the fact of the matter is, I've seen very minimal response rates for business surveys. That's not to say we will not commit to giving it a go on this one, and including a survey and an outreach plan. Happy to do that. I just want to manage some expectations around statistically valid data and response volumes. Okay, any other questions on flash vote data?
No.
No?
Don't see any.
All right. As, as Director Huber mentioned, we're going to continue to outreach. We're going to sharpen our pencils and work on updating the ordinance to address the concerns we've heard already. And we'll continue that till the date we bring it forward to you. And part, before we do that, we're going to do a public workshop coming sometime this fall, this winter, again, to the business community or the interested parties. We'll have it right here across the hall and have, say, this is what we heard from you, this is what we've changed, what do you think now? And have that conversation, and see if we scratch that edge, or if, if we need to make some more changes.
What about a telephone survey? You call them up and have a telephone survey. They have to answer the phone, right?
Unfortunately, not.
Well, would you get a, but you want to do what you can to increase. So, you, so telephone, cross off 50 people. But now, we'll mail 50 people. And, I mean, in other words, you, you should try all the avenues. Some people don't do online surveys. So, it, it's just a matter of using all your tools to reach a little this one, a little that one. But I agree with the Vice Mayor, is that you need to poll the businesses, not people who aren't responsible for the fees.
If, Madam Mayor, if I can add to, this is really property owners, not so much businesses. So, some businesses do own their property, but a lot of these vacancies we're talking about are property owners, not necessarily business. And the problem is, there's not a business in there.
So, these are residential's, too?
No, these are commercial properties. So, this is, that's what this is issued.
Well, I, I, did I miss, I misspoke, I misspoke then. I mean, the person who owns the building, who's the ultimate registrar, registrant.
Right. And so, we've been putting a lot of outreach efforts to them, to try to get them engaged. We'll talk about some different ideas on how to make that happen. The survey challenges are kind of what was spoken to. You need people to participate in the survey to get statistically valid data, and that has been a challenge in the past. I'm not saying we won't try it again. I heard Director Huber commit to doing that. And we will continue to do outreach efforts. But some of these vacancy problems we have are non-engagement. And so, I think that we can take the comments that we heard from you and figure out how we'll address the spirit of that as it relates to the property owner outreach.
Okay. Well, it's, it's a work in progress.
So, we'll be working on that this fall and winter, and continue to make changes to the ordinance to make sure it's the right fit for us. So, if the community or business owners or folks watching want to see the current draft ordinance that's on, you can see the website there, such sites.net/cpr, or you can sign up for the emails to get informed when we'll be having workshop and, and things along those lines. So, recommend you sign up for that.
So, I got one more. So, I understand the city of Sacramento is also looking at a very similar ordinance. Do they, do you compare notes with them, so it's methodology of reaching out to some of these property owners? Is that something, would collaborate with the city of Sacramento at all on this kind of?
I, I think our mix of property owners is generally different from them, but we, it's something we can. We did have some early conversations with them that they were exploring this, but they weren't sure they were either going. The last I heard, they were going more of a tax route, which is a whole different ballgame essentially from this. So, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but happy to continue to monitor that.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Any other questions, comments? Moving along. Next item?
Our next item is city manager items.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. Ash, if you're your city manager, I do have a, a number of different updates here to go over with you tonight. And we'll pull those updates here momentarily. But I will talk about Citrus, I know Citrus Nights is in here, and that was a great event. One of the comments that were brought up during council comments earlier was, hey, you know, are we going to do this again next year? Hope we do this again next year. Well, one of the strategic objectives that you adopted at the Strategic Planning Retreat back in March is to have a review of our city events. You know, we've, we've tried some new things over the course of the last few years. We still have some things from the past. And so, we'll look at an analysis of these different events, how successful they've been in the community, some attendance numbers, things of that nature. And we'll review those with the council, so you can provide us some feedback on what you'd like to see, see more of, less of, stop doing, so on and so forth.
When you look at attendance, though, you'd be sure to put the weather report next to it. Because if it's a hot night, you might have less. If it rained that day like it did for Citrus Nights, it, you know, the grass was wet.
That's a good.
So, we need to know what the weather report was that day.
And sorry for interrupting, but what is, wasn't Citrus Nights sort of in lieu of Sunday Fun Day being canceled?
Yeah, the Park District had their, their, is it Jubilee, the 75th year?
75th anniversary.
Yeah. So, their, their 75th year anniversary is coming up, actually, in early October. They're going to have their event for that. So, that was in conflict from a planning and execution standpoint with Sunday Fun Day. So, this was a new event that we tried in lieu of the Sunday Fun Day event. So, we can talk more about that. We definitely have been getting feedback from our community. They want to see, like, more of these, like, music events, concerts in the park, things of that nature. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on Stars and Stripes, and those are some of the aspects that they really like. But, well, we'll have some idea flow to discuss when we bring that item forward. I think it's on December 4th, whatever that first meeting is in, in December is where we'll, we'll bring that forward. Actually, I'm thinking December 4th. It obviously wouldn't be that. It would be the, you know, the first, the second Wednesday we, in December. But we wanted to hold it after that holiday tree, tree lighting event that we do, because we'd also want that data point to talk about as well.
And you're putting the cost of the event, so we know the number of people attended versus cost.
Yeah, absolutely. We're all about return on investment here, and so, we'll make sure that we have those numbers available.
Okay.
Where's your report?
We have, the, many of you councilmembers talked about the Citrus Heights Police Department.
It's not on our, on our monitors.
Okay. Well, we do, I will see if I can get some assistance with that, but we do have them on the large screens here to your right and left. And this is for our Citrus Heights Police Department Honors and Awards Ceremony that was spoken to earlier. It was a fantastic event. I know that I had a lot of warmth in my heart and pride for the excellent work of our police department, all those that keep this community safe. And they do a fantastic job of not necessarily policing the community, but policing with the community. And there's a lot of support for the way in which they do their job. So definitely we really appreciated the chief and his command team and all the support team that made this a fantastic event. We had a lot of people that were recognized and honored. And yeah, we kind of covered the course of the year. So a lot to be proud of there. And we saw not only our veteran police officers that have helped build the department over time, but we also saw a lot of our new officers being recognized too. And it's great to see that continuity of excellence in service that's continuing to be part of that culture there. So I just was really proud of a lot of the awards that were given that day. We talked about Citrus Nights. Here's a few shots from that evening. And it did, as the mayor mentioned, rained pretty good that morning. But we still had a lot of people turn out, and everybody talked to, really enjoyed that event. It's kind of walking through the crowd and getting some feedback real time. So we'll talk more about that in December. But appreciate the staff team that worked to execute this. A lot of people had a great time out there. There's an elected officials reception, actually tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. This is something the Citrus Heights Chamber does, and I think it's a great event. We get to hear from our elected officials. And that happens, you know, right here at City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there tomorrow night. It's one that I always enjoy going to. It's, the school district can check with me when they scheduled college night, and I need to take my senior there tomorrow night. But we'll have many of our staff that will be there and be there to support the event because it is a great event. We hope the community can turn out to that. We also have the Livability Summit that is held by Valley Vision and SACOG. And they're holding it here in Citrus Heights at our event center this year. So very excited about that. You know, when you think about Citrus Heights, it's really kind of the hub, if you will, for the region. And you think about all the spokes that kind of come off that. I mean, we really are the center of the region. And so having the Livability Summit held here is fantastic. That's going to be Wednesday, October 1st. It is a ticketed event. So if members of the community have interest in this, you can go ahead and get more information about it. Yeah, one of these web, no, no website. Well, we have it on our website. How's that? And so we'll make sure that if you, if you, if you're interested in it, come visit citrusheights.net, and we'll make sure that we're able to link you to that. But it's, it's a good event, and that'll be again Wednesday, October 1st. I know many of our councilmembers will be there. Fall chip-in day, just on the theme of beautification of the city and are always continuously improving our community image for the benefit of residents and businesses, we'll be holding, holding a chip-in day. This is Armando Velazquez with our team, does a fantastic job organizing this. So this will be on Saturday, October 11th, from 8:30 to 12:30, meeting here at City Hall. And so it's a kind of hands-on day of spreading bark, and you build community that way, too. So, you know, people really come together and beautify the city, and we'll see residents that we don't see at other events turn out to these, too. So great opportunity to, to meet some neighbors. And there's some food and raffle prizes, too. Let's see, we have Assemblyman Hoover is going to be holding a community meeting here in the City Council Chamber on October 16th at 6:00 PM. And then our Citrus Heights Community Marching Band's Halloween Parade, Howling Like a Dog, and Harvest Festival, because it is a canine-oriented event. It's on October 19th. The parade will occur on Grand Oaks Boulevard. Last year, they ran the new parade route. It was well-received. And that's where the new parade route will continue. And there's actually a contest, a decorating contest for the homes along the parade route. And if you decorate your home and you are selected, Mr. Cook from the marching band is gonna, there'll be a prize of a, a new television. So.
And the mayor does, does make that selection, and the mayor is open to, anyway.
Open to looking at some great, some great, well-decorated houses. That's fantastic.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. Turnout to that. The parade kicks off at 9:00 AM. You know, decorate your pet in a costume if they'll stand, stand for that. And there'll be live music, raffle prizes, pet costume contest as well. And then there's a fantastic, if you love classic cars, I mean, it's a first-class car show. Big turnout for that. And then crafts and vendor booths as well. So great event. And then there will be a council meeting recess. The League of California Cities Annual Conference is the week that our October 8th City Council Meeting would normally be held. We have been able to move some items around, so we'll make sure that we're covering everything at our October 22nd meeting, which will be a, a pretty full meeting that night. So.
And I will not be in attendance at that one.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting us know, Mayor. And then we'll, we'll make sure to adjust our agenda in accordance. If there's some items we feel like we need to have a full council for, then we'll, we'll adjust the agenda accordingly. So. And then sadly, we lost a community volunteer that near endured to all of our hearts because she was a big part of this community. Charlotte, Charlotte Correthers was our CHP volunteer. I always knew her, Charlotte. And she lived a long life, and she gave a lot to her community.
I, I have a.
That's, that's terrific. So it sounds like the mayor will have a few words as well. But I just know from my perspective, I really appreciated everything that she did for our police department and our community, and was a great community champion. And she's being missed by many right now. I believe that concludes my comments.
We can leave her picture up.
Yep.
So the next item is council member suggestions, future meeting item, agendas, anything from anybody?
I do have a quick one that I forgot to mention. I just wanted, so it's Rosh Shana. This is the last, it ended at sundown today. So for our Jewish community, wishing a Happy New Year. So Shana Tova.
Okay. So I'd like to, as Charlotte's picture is there, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in her memory. And so I, I have a little thing I'll read. I want to take a moment to recognize and honor the life of Charlotte Correthers, who recently passed away. Charlotte was a cornerstone of our community. And if you see her picture, you probably recognize her because she had this melodic voice when she talked. She just kind of like created music when she spoke. She began her service with the Sheriff's Department, and in 2006 became a founding member of the Citrus Heights Police Department's Volunteer Unit. Over the years, she dedicated countless hours to supporting our officers, staff, and residents with compassion, commitment, and a servant's heart. Beyond her work with CHPD, Charlotte was an active member of Neighborhood Association 10, which is where I met her over 20 years ago. And she served on our SOAR Board. And she continued to give of her time and talents to strengthen our city. Those who knew Charlotte will remember her warmth, her unwavering spirit, and her love for this community that she called her home. Her impact will be felt for generations as she leaves behind a legacy of service, friendship, and dedication that embodies the very best of Citrus Heights. On behalf of the City Council and the City of Citrus Heights, we extend our deepest condolences to Charlotte's family, friends, and to her CHPD family. We ask our community to join us in holding her memory close and in honoring her by carrying forward the same spirit of kindness and service she so faithfully shared with all of us. And with that, we adjourn in her honor.